August 10th, 2020, here in the council chambers. First, my apologies for starting late. We had some technical difficulties. Reminded to all those that are out there in the audience, if you keep your phones or computers on mute until you're ready to speak, otherwise there's feedback. I am muting you here in chambers, so if you see that you're muted, it's only to allow for proper communications. In this meeting, a call to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via in-person as well as remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information which is noted below on this agenda. This meeting will be, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at www.cid.southbridge.m-a.us as soon as we're able to. Given the fact that one of the councilors is not here, a roll call vote will be taken for all votes taken under this order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to apply in the United States of America to how we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Excused at this time.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
We have a quorum. Item three, considering accept the special town council meeting minutes of Monday, July 20th, 2020, the 6:30 PM meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? See none, roll call. Oh, Counselor Marquetti, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that both of these say July 20th.
Yeah, there are two of them. Special Council, I think.
So we have both meetings, one was on Monday, July 20th, and one was on Wednesday, July 20th.
Hmm.
Just wanted to point that out. Just an easy correction.
Okay, what was the date then? The correct date should be?
They both say July 20th.
Okay.
So the second one should, the, the regular council meeting would have been?
Yeah, they both, yeah, they both say it, the meeting, it's two.
Yeah, the special council meeting was before our regular council meeting. It was, it was Monday.
Okay.
Okay, so we just got to change the date to Monday.
Wednesday is correct.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. You have to speak up.
One or the other have to be, it either is, it is Monday, July 20th, and the other one says Wednesday, July 20th, so.
I can check the dates and just update them.
According to my calendar, it was Monday.
We did not have a special town council, do we have a special town?
We had the executive session before the regular meeting.
Oh, yes, we did. All right, so they were both that day, so it should just read Monday.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, any other errors, corrections, or omissions? Thank you, Counselor Marquetti. See none, roll call.
Counselor Katrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
And Counselor Adams.
Yes. Considering accept the town council meeting minutes of, then that would be Monday, July 20th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Second.
So moved.
Any other corrections, omissions, additions, deletions? Counselor Steves.
Um, yeah, there's a couple of them. Um, one is, actually, two of them are under item number four. EHS counselor misspelled the first one, for Counselor Katrona, and I'm not actually a member of PND, that should be Counselor Lazo.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Counselor.
I'm sorry. Um, I, under, under item number four, EHS counselor Katrona is misspelled, and under planning and development, I'm not a, I'm not a PND member, Counselor Lazo is. Um, and there's a couple of minor spelling mistakes. Under item number eight, a motion was made by Counselor Ryan. And, uh, that looks like it.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Any others? Roll call as amended to accept.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
And Counselor Katrona.
Yes.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on August 4th. Several of the items that are down toward the bottom of this agenda were on that meeting. Um, we also discussed and put, put on hold, um, the contract between the Southbridge and the Cook and Company Insurance Services about health plan management so that Melissa could get, I'm sorry, yeah, Melissa could get a couple more quotes on that one. Um, and everything else I'll raise when we get to that point.
Thank you.
We do not have a meeting formally scheduled, however, I did send an email to Yvonne about sending, setting up one for next week.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the DPW Subcommittee meeting was held on Thursday, July 30th, 2020, in council chambers. Uh, the following is an outline. I called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. In attendance were Subcommittee members Marquetti, Chairman Michael Marquetti, Counselor Gus Steves, Counselor Joseph Dow, citizen member Sherry Bemis on remote. Others in attendance were Counselor John Daniel, Counselor Jaclyn Ryan, Counselor David Adams, DPW Director Heather Blakely, and Town Manager Ron Sanangelo on remote. We discussed the change order number two for Lavange Electric for the wastewater treatment plant, electrical upgrades for $27,323.99. The vote was three in favor and one abstained, and that's on tonight's meeting agenda, item 16, for further discussion. We also discussed change order number three for Lavange Electric for the wastewater treatment plant, electrical upgrades for a $50,500 credit and time extension on the contract. That vote was four in favor of sending it to the full council for, for approval, and that'll be on tonight's agenda, 17. Discuss Engineering Services Amendment Number Three for StanTech for Phase Two Electrical Upgrades for $25,500 to cover additional engineering contract services and oversight due to time extension on the Lavange Electric Contract. Uh, the vote was four in favor, four to nothing in favor, and that'll be on agenda item 18 tonight. Discuss the Engineering Services Amendment Number One for tie-in bond Ashland Avenue Bridge Replacement for $9,000. That was a vote of three to one in favor, and that will be agenda item 19 tonight. Discuss the modeling proposal from Duberry for the South Street Waterline Design for $10,000, and that vote was four to zero in favor, and that will be on tonight's agenda, item 20. We also discussed the findings of the pavement management study completed by Beta dated June 22nd, 2020. Excuse me, that summary is on the town's website. It outlines the conditions of our roads and repair costs. That was a discussion only, and no vote was taken. We discussed the inter municipal agreement for participation in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition between the Town of Spencer and the Town of Southbridge. That vote was three in favor, three to nothing in favor, with the condition that changes are made concerning language in the contract and the clarification on the cost. That's on tonight's agenda, 21. And finally, we discussed the updates on, to ongoing projects of the DTW. There were questions raised by counselors on some of the ongoing projects, including the Franklin Terrace retaining wall, the Main Street signal improvements, Hook Street redesign, DPW facility hazardous waste cleanup, Mill Street Bridge repair, Galkwood Road, Ellis Road improvements, sidewalks, and town hall improvements, including air conditioning for the council chambers. The meeting adjourned at approximately 9:30 PM. I would just like to add that there were some audio problems that we had here, having the meeting here in the town chambers with people who were trying to participate remotely. Uh, I think the problem was, I could hear them through the laptop, but they couldn't hear the counselors up here talking.
Yeah, we can hear them, yes.
And going forward, I don't know, I think maybe you want to talk about it tonight, but going forward, we're probably going to have to either go all remote or, or supply all the counselors with laptops. I don't know, but there was a, a major problem with people on remote hearing us, and I don't have any meetings scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. It is on, for later on in the agenda to talk about that. Education and Human Services, Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No meetings held, no meetings scheduled.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. August 4th was our last meeting. Items 14 and 15 are on tonight's agenda. Our next scheduled PND is August 25th. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Protection of Persons and Property, Counsel Lazo is not here. I do not believe there's a meeting scheduled at this time, however, I do know in conversations with the chiefs, there are some items that may be coming up, so I'm sure they'll be in touch with Counsel Lazo to schedule that. Special Committee reports, Curbside Advisory Committee, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing's changed from last time we've met. Just kind of waiting on the new town manager to take hold, and I'll be briefing him, as well as the town council and the rest of residents of the Town of Southbridge on what the committee has come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. COVID-19 Public Health and Safety Brief from Chief Woodson is here this evening. Ask him to be present in the council chambers in case any council has had any questions. Meeting was held this morning to discuss the Emergency Operations Center and the status of our activities here in Southbridge. Before I give it over to the chief, I want to thank everyone, especially the chiefs, Counselor Adams, for their work in the Emergency Operations Center as we move to the next phase, but great leadership by the two chiefs in the Town of Southbridge, and we're fortunate to have them to guide us through this ever-changing pandemic that's going on, something that's changing every day, and we had a lot of challenges that we talked, spoke about today in the EOC, but thank you, Chief, and thank you for being here to provide an update and how we've been moving forward. Chief?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, also, members of the council, thanks for having us here tonight. Uh, the total cases, just so I can quickly report on the COVID cases as of this morning, we had 182 total cases in our community. Thirteen are currently active. That means there's 149 closed, and unfortunately, we're holding at 10, well, fortunately, I guess, but unfortunately, there have been 10 deaths in our community. Uh, we spoke this morning at length at the Emergency Operations Center meeting about putting on hold any future meetings and waiting and see what happens in the state and what the governor's directives are. I know that, I'm pretty confident right now, we are the only community that's still having EOC meetings on a monthly basis, a regular basis. Most communities have taken them down, if not all. We didn't want to make that recommendation to take it down and close it permanently, but rather just put it on hold and see what the future holds for us. The numbers, just so the community and all the council will know, they'll continue to be posted on the Police Department Facebook page on the first of every month. I, I know the town manager also shares it for the town hall page. I know the Fire Department shares it, and I also appreciate and thank Counselor Adams for giving updates at most council meetings or the ones that I'm at least not here at. So with that?
Any questions of the chief, comments? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, just a question, do we have any idea what the test rate is, what the positive rate is for the community when people get tested, no?
Well, if I could, through you, Mr. Chair, I would direct that question to the Board of Health. I don't want to give you the wrong information for percentages for Southbridge. I don't know if the town manager or chairman?
I apologize, I didn't hear the question. Could you just?
I was wondering if we knew what the positive rate was when testing for the community?
No, I don't, I don't have that information. Uh, in my conversation with the Health Director, Southbridge is staying pretty steady. As I'm understanding right now, the hospital has almost no patients or maybe no patients. We're not seeing a big incline here, but across the state, they are seeing a slow incline. It's raised concerns with the governor, but I don't have that exact rate for you.
Um, if it's, if it is possible, is there any way we could get that number?
Sure, I'll ask them tomorrow for, you're looking for the rate as a percentage of what the state?
Of what, of how, how many positive cases are we getting per, for testing? What's the positivity rate for those tests?
For the Town of Southbridge?
For the Town of Southbridge, yes.
All right. I will, we do have a member of the Board of Health online. Uh, Mr. Larishell, do you happen to have any conversations with the inspector as to what the positivity rate in the Town of Southbridge is?
Uh, we have not got a report from Andy since our last meeting, so I could not comment on it at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Counselor Ryan, are you looking for a percentage as Southbridge compares to state? Is that what you mean?
I, I know the state number. I want to know what the positivity rate is for our community so I can compare that.
For just our community as it relates to the state, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief?
And if I could, just one more thing. Uh, there's a lot of orders going out by the governor's office, and there's a lot of confusion. Tomorrow, in fact, there's some other restrictions being put in place. As a police department and what all police departments in the Commonwealth are doing, we're not taking any enforcement action until there's some clarity provided. We are not going to become the masked police. We are not going to go and break up social gatherings because they went from 100 to 50 people. As of right now, we're in a holding pattern, and tomorrow, the governor is supposed to be releasing further information during his afternoon press conference. So I just, before any questions come from the council, that's where we stand as a police department. We are not unique. This is a statewide thing, with all police chiefs giving the orders to stand down until we get some more clarification. We spent way too many years in this community to establish some positive relationships, and we're not going to go out now and start writing $500 tickets until we have guidance, and we know that what we're doing is legal.
Counselor Ryan?
Just, just a quick follow-up than that, Mr. Chair, through you. Is, so, is the process going to be, because I'm sure a lot of people still, because of how many orders are coming out, are not going to know that maybe the size gathering has gone down. Even if orders come out saying that there's going to be fines, will it be the police department's directive to try to inform people first before assessing fines?
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely, and quite honestly, it's confusing to me. And I've been dealing with it every single day of the week, uh, so I can't even imagine being a person that lives in the community that isn't sitting in these meetings on a daily basis, so it's a very fluid situation. Everybody's heard it a million times. It seems to change by the hour, so we're just gonna, we'll wait and see what happens tomorrow. It's kind of a hurry up and wait.
Well, I appreciate your department's leniency, and thank you for that. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief on COVID-19? Counselor Marquetti.
Uh, through you, to the chief, this information on your Facebook page is the same that was on the town's website. Some constituents have been asking me what happened to the, the information that was on the web, the town's website that had the rates and the deaths and all of the other information that you used to post.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, again. So we, we made a, we determined that this decision was not made in a vacuum to pull, to not post the numbers every day on the town website, rather transitioned to a monthly. So I don't know if that answers your question. We were doing it every day. Counselor Adams, I don't know if he can speak to that, but we shelved that idea, and now we're doing once the first of every month, just because the data, especially in our community, some days we'd go several days with no change. And then we'd have one day where we have an uptick of 10, and we would have nine that recovered, so really, we were only up one, and it just seemed to make more sense to have more consistent data and more accurate data doing it on a monthly basis.
Counselor Adams, as public information officer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thanks, chief. Just kind of answer, back in June, we decided to stop putting up the public information page or updating it because numbers were remaining the same. We were kind of flattening the curve at that point in time within our town. We mentioned that at a town council meeting, so the residents understand that. Now, at any time, though, I, I talk to chief every single day. We check each other's numbers, make sure everything is good we're getting from the Board of Health. If there is a resident that would like to see or get information back from us as far as numbers, I, I'm willing to, the best I can, every single day, get those numbers out to the town council. If you get a resident that contacts you and says, can you get, give me an update on the numbers, by all means, may, you can answer the question yourself at that point in time. That public information page, all that information, I think there's 12 pages, has not changed from June 26th yet, as of yet. I'm not saying it won't change down the road, but anytime, if you guys come up with a better idea, by all means, let me know, and I'll, I'll work with the chief and the chair and, you know, and Chief Norman as well, just to try to get some more information out there. I have yet to receive any phone calls, though, from residents, but maybe you are, Counselor Marquetti, or Counselor Steves, or whatever it may be, but we can do that, we can work that.
Well, if I could follow up, if, if there's no problem with it, why don't we just put it back on the website so people can see it for themselves? Some people have said that the numbers are confusing. Some people say they rely on the numbers to even decide if they're going to hold religious services and things like that, so if there's no problem with doing it, then just put it on the town's website.
We either put it on the town website, or I could sit down and talk to the chief tomorrow and try to figure out a plan of attack, and then we can go from that point on.
Thank you.
And if I could, you know, Mr. Chair, through the chair, Counselor Marquetti, and you know this, and we've talked about this since March, my goal, absolute transparency on everything, every number, I want all the residents to understand that. If they have questions, they can call me, they can email me, text me. I know they go through Counselor Adams or any other elected official. Call us, and we'll give it to you, but I will absolutely work with Counselor Adams tomorrow on addressing your concerns.
Can I add one more thing? I think the state is also providing that information on a daily basis. Not, I'm not going to sit there and tell you it's not a, maybe a day behind, or whatever it may be, but these are direct numbers that we're receiving, that they're receiving, that can go right on the mass.gov website. It was just because the information flow became repetitive, and we're, which we had no problem with, but after a while, it became, how much more information do we give them when our numbers, viewer numbers on our Facebook Live dates were actually diminishing, um, I would say, week by week, tremendously? So, but we'll work something out. I'll talk to chief and the chair tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief? Thank you. Chairman's announcements. First off, we had several board openings that had become vacant. I had mentioned this a while back. Um, I had checked the website last week to see if those were put out as postings for the positions of a school committee member, for the Southbridge School Committee member to fill the unexpired term of Counsel Ryan, who came aboard here, Southbridge Housing Authority, which was a position that was not filled. Oh, I'm sorry.
Point, yeah, because I might, yeah. It's not expired on the Southbridge.
Bay Path, Pay Path School Committee, Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Committee. So I asked if, why that had not been put up? They had not been put up by the town manager's office. I've asked that those be put up, and applications will be accepted for those positions of school committee member, for the Southbridge School Committee member, which was an unfilled position on the election. Southbridge Housing Authority, which was an unfilled position on the election, and Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Committee, Bay Path, to fill Counsel Ryan's term as she joined us. So we've asked that that be put up. We are scheduling joint meetings with those committees to occur sometime either August 30th or the beginning of September. Hopefully, we're asking any residents out there that wish to be considered for those positions to please submit a letter to the town manager's office expressing your interest in joining those boards. We'd appreciate anybody coming, stepping forward to participate in that so that we can get those positions filled. We have subcommittee vacancies as well. I'm not sure if any subcommittee chairman have received any notices of people that wish to join. I'm sure they have, but if anybody's interested, please send in for the five subcommittees that we have, Department of Public Works, Protection of Persons and Property, General Government, Education and Human Services, and Plan and Development. So, uh, please submit those letters. It's a great opportunity for you to serve the Town of Southbridge if you have concerns about the activities in those departments, school system, Department of Public Works, any of the functions that we do as general government functions. It's a great opportunity to, uh, participate. Earlier today, the Emergency Operations Center was brought up by Mr. Pelletier, our Director of Inspections, the special town council meeting that we held a couple of weeks ago relative to instituting the travel policy. This Commonwealth of Massachusetts has instituted a strict, uh, process, procedure, so that we may need to reconsider the policy that we have and either rescind it. He did not forward me any information in the two weeks since that meeting. That order came forward prior to July 31st. However, nothing was sent over to the Chair of the Town Council to ask us to reconsider that, so, uh, we have the state policy as well as the town policy at this time, so we will work to see what we can do. Unfortunately, our next meeting as a council is until August 31st. Uh, I don't anticipate scheduling a special town council meeting just to take up that issue because of failure to provide information to us. In regards to school opening, uh, this morning, Dr. Villar provided us to the Emergency Operations Center as well, an update as to the school opening, um, and I had a follow-up conversation with Dr. Villar earlier this morning relative to, uh, the process of school openings. Opening of the school will be September 14th. He has provided that information out to all the parents in the school system. He also, I believe, sent over a letter to the council, so check your email today because a letter was sent of what the letters were sent out to parents today. So as of right now, the opening of school will be September 14th. The issue remains as to the delivery of programs. As you're aware, the state has requested that doc, well, any school system provide three separate distinct plans to the Commissioner of Education as to what it may look like in the town. So they are working on that plan. Those plans have to be in by the end of the week. It was supposed to be August 12th. It has been moved to August 14th. Dr. Villar also indicated to me that they've done a lot of outreach to parents through the school feeding programs as to ask them, parents especially, what they want to see and get some input. So in the letter that was sent to you, you'll see that there's information as to, and I think it's important to put out to the public, that, um, if families feel they're not comfortable sending their children back to school due to concerns about COVID-19, they would like to assure you that they intend to provide families with a remote learning option when school begins. They will provide additional information as it goes forward. He provided to us the status of the purchase of Chromebooks for the students. I believe it was 1,800 Chromebooks that he stated this morning, as well as another couple hundred from the State Department of Ed, the purchase of 400 Wi-Fi hotspots for students to be able to use, as well as the PPE, medical masks, hand sanitizing everything to make the students safe. His indication to us this morning, and to me later on, was that the goal is to provide the safest delivery of services to the students as well as the staff, and that's at the utmost concern of his and his staff. He did also indicate to me that he has been in contact with the new Chair of the Southbridge School Committee and wanted to relay the information that he will be attending the next school committee meeting in public to, uh, to let the community know what their plan is. I know Counsel Steves had sent a follow-up letter or emailed to me earlier when, about that information, as to why, uh, they are not providing the plans out to the public right now, and his comment to me, and I, I think I respect it, is the fact that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had stated to all superintendents that they were not supposed to announce any of their plans until they were approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. He said some towns and, and school committees have opted to provide that information. However, he is an employee of the Department of Ed, and therefore, he is following their policies, and that's why he has not provided any other additional information to the public outside of getting their plans approved by the state. So they are working the three plans. He did discuss with us this morning, as well as some of the busing and maybe three tiers. So there's a lot of work, and I feel, I really have, I feel bad for the school systems all throughout the Commonwealth because of the fact that, um, there is no clear-cut expectation of what school is going to look like, and they're putting all communities in a bind, this is my personal opinion, um, to say, hey, come up with three plans, and there's no, uh, structure to it, and there's a lot of work and planning and finances to go through, so we'll work with him, and I know the town manager had asked about some financing on[1664.11] asked about some financing on that, but it looks like there is some money from the state and federal government. So, Dr. Villar will be working with us, but I didn't ask him to come here tonight to provide an update outside of what I provided because he really doesn't know what the plan's going to be until it gets approved by the Department of Ed. But he will push that information out to us, and any concerns that we have, we can follow up with him. So, that's the best I can do on the school, and we look forward to working with him on that. And then last thing, well, one other thing I have is I got several correspondences from different residents, and I just want to bring this up that had come to me about some concerns that the Massachusetts Municipal Association and regards to the police reform is pushing and supporting some of the initiatives in that reform package. And some towns have put forward statements to support their police department about the quality of policing that they do in this town. I just, I'll pass that around. And the MMA, I don't think, I don't think anybody in this council, I'm not going to speak for myself, they haven't reached out to the town of Southbridge to say, hey, what do you think about your policing in your town? Is it great policing? I think, and I know, and I've said this publicly, we have the most diverse police department in the Commonwealth, which is reflective of our community. I truly believe that. Good partnerships with our town residents, and it reflects on them. So, I think that's something maybe we should take up at another date. I don't have it on the agenda, but I just throw that out. It's information that was sent to me about how the MMA will talk about the town of Southbridge, or promoted this throughout as advocacy on these bills without reaching out to the actual leaders of those towns to see what our stance is. So, and finally, to the town manager, I want to thank you for your service to the community, as this is the last council meeting that you will be attending as town manager. I thank you for all your service to the town of Southbridge and wish you well in your next endeavors. With that, I'll turn this over to the town manager. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your comments, and I want to thank not only the council, but I really want to take this opportunity to thank all the citizens of Southbridge who have been tremendously supportive of me as I've been here as town manager. It really has been an honor to work with all the citizens. And, you know, you sometimes look at how you did by the criticisms you get from citizens, because a lot of citizens get lambasted on things like Facebook and social media. And I'm very proud that I've had nothing but pretty much public positive comments from citizens throughout the town, and I appreciate their support. They've worked with me, and they've been absolutely fantastic in bringing their issues forward. I don't have any, any real formal report. The town is still doing everything we can to protect not only the employees, but the citizens who use our town buildings. As you know, we are one of the few town halls that are open and have been open for a couple of months. I want to not only thank, and Counselor Jovan said it in the thanking of the police department for their work, and he's absolutely correct. We have extremely diversified in a very, in my opinion, a great police department who provides great services. But that also applies to all of our town departments. Our fire department is excellent. They had a small fire tonight. They took care of it very rapidly, provided quality services to residents, and did a great job, and they appreciate our fire chief and all the employees. But those compliments go across the board to all my town employees, our DPW directors, our assessor, our tax collector, our finance director. This town doesn't work on any one department, but works with the quality of a whole team of people. And this is my chance to publicly say, I've never worked with a better team of people than I have here in Southbridge. This team works together. When one department had asked another for support, they get it immediately. Nobody has ever said no to me when I've said, hey, please, I want you to help fire a tax collector. I want you to help, you know, the assessor's office. It's phenomenal in how they work together even when they're not asked. I can't tell you how many times I've left here at 5 o'clock to see department heads still working and still trying to achieve and finish whatever work they had before them on their table. The staff, the employees, from the clerical all the way across to janitorial maintenance, have done everything they can to provide quality services to the people of this town, and they really think it shows extraordinary in this whole COVID-19 situation. To all be working throughout this whole crisis has been phenomenal. I don't know another town that's done it. Not another single town that I know where all the employees pretty much continue to work through this whole crisis. And they did so in spite of the fear. And believe me, this crisis has caused fear in everybody to some degree or another. But it is a special kind of fear when you're here every day among other employees, and you kind of can't escape it. So, it's my chance to say thank you to each and every town employee. You have tremendous courage. You showed tremendous dedication to the people of this town, and you've been awesome to work with. And I really want to take this time to express my appreciation to each and one of them, because they are fantastic, and you are lucky to have these people as your team. So, please do everything you can to treat them right. They truly, truly deserve it. With that, Mr. Chairman, I complete my comments, and thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, presentations, we have none. Citizens Forum, this is by remote access. Is there anyone in the wishes to address the Southbridge Town Council, or anything not on the agenda this evening? Mr. Larishel. Good evening, Mr. Larishel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
You're on the big screen, so they'll see you.
What was that?
Go ahead.
We have a very hard time hearing everybody else in the chambers. Thank you. Roland Larishel, Bryanwood Avenue. I appear before you this evening to ask for the assistance of the council-
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I am having a hard time understanding-
...to express our severe, this pleasure in National Grid Electric's epic failure during last week's storm. As you know, we had the storm late Tuesday afternoon. There was only one way to get into the neighborhood of Dennison. There was a tree down blocking half of, cutting Bryanwood Avenue half. There was a tree down in wires on Dennison Drive at Oak Street. There was trees down on Dennison Drive down by the old Falcon Road. The only way to access this entire neighborhood, which by the way, by National Grid's app, was over 1,200 ratepayers were out of power. The only way to access this neighborhood for emergency services was to go all the way around and up Old South Road. And thank God, there was no need in this neighborhood, but if emergency services went to the wrong side, wrong address on the wrong side of the tree that was down, it could have been disastrous. Now, in my past life, I worked for emergency services. We had representatives, qualified reputable representatives from National Grid that would access these areas with trees down in wires, would prove that the wires were dead. Their crew would cut up. Between fire and DPW, the trees were removed, pushed to the side, and access was given. Access was crucial. Now, do not get my statements wrong. I saw no one from National Grid. They were MIA. I think it was Wednesday evening, a vehicle came to my neighborhood with a clipboard, and approached the tree that was down in wires. And by the way, when the power's out, the wires are now trashed. So, why they weren't just cut to alleviate the movement of the trees is beyond me. The vehicle was approached. It was a Jeep Cherokee. There was no identification, no nothing, and this was from a tree, a power crew from Canada. With the professionalism of displaying membership, I would not trust this person telling me that a doorbell wire was dead. I did not see the first National Grid truck in this neighborhood until Sunday afternoon. Thursday evening, Thursday morning, the power came back on. Thursday evening, Bryanwood was cleared by a crew from Canada. This town has experienced worse disasters in the past. There are no experts. I had the pleasure or displeasure, however you want to look at it, of serving the town during those emergencies, and I have never in my life saw the poor preparation, the result of agony that neighbors had to go through, regardless of the time that COVID had put on them. But I know several neighbors that had to throw food away because it spoiled in their refrigerators. We are ratepayers. We are citizens. I think National Grid, as a corporation, dropped the ball. They were unprepared, and I believe I am seeking the help of this council to reach out to National Grid. I don't know what else we can do but to formally express our severe and strong disgust in their lack of preparation, in lack of service to ratepayers and citizens of this town. Luckily, in this neighborhood, we did not have any problems that Chief Normandin's Department or Chief Woodston's Department had to respond to, except to check out before the tree's down. But the other thing too is that when the power went out, the phone went out, and the cable went out. So, that means alarm systems were out, life alerts were out. When cell phones died, you were on an island. And I think it's, the only way I can describe National Grid's response to this, what, four to five-hour storm, I could use the one word disgusting. I don't want to rant, but that, I had to bring this to the council because this was a very, it was only two days, but it was a long two days, and it should not be allowed to happen again. It seems that some of these corporations come into our town and seem like they say everything we want to hear, and then when they get established, they walk all over us. So, I thank you for listening, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Larishel. We will have the town manager's office formulate some kind of letter on our response to send that out. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
May I just respond to that? I just want to echo, I understand-
You're going to speak up because you can't hear you.
Can everyone hear me now? Okay. I just want to echo Mr. Larishel's comments. I understand the frustration. I live in a part of the neighborhood that's on Hamilton Street that's often forgotten about, and I understand the frustration of not being responded to fast enough. This isn't the first time National Grid has taken its time in responding to a community like Southbridge. And it's really frustrating because people here are suffering economically, and they already have enough hardship. And it's really sad to see a corporation which has pretty much monopoly on electricity not show as much due diligence to the people of this community as some of our more wealthier neighbors. So, I understand Mr. Larishel's pain, and I hope that we're able to deal with this in some way going forward. So, thank you, Mr. Larishel.
Thank you. All right. We'll pass that on to the chief and Emergency Management Director to come up with some information to the town council, to get, gather information as to what transpired and what their response was. I know the chief worked on it. All right, chief, I'll give you a-
Jack, we can't hear you.
Yeah. Chief, I just said that we will have you formulate a response and get some information so you can report back to the council, unless you have something quick to add on that, one particular point.
I do. Just a quick update on the whole storm preparation. From the first tree that went down on the wires, National Grid's phone system went down. So, we were unable, as a public safety entity, were able to not even get a hold of National Grid at the onset of the storm. So, yes, I have multiple failures of the National Grid process here, and we will work with the town manager's office to send them a nice letter.
What we'll do is we'll refer this to PPP, and you can have a discussion in PPP, then report back to the full council, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Are there any other residents online that wish to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda? Anything else?
Were you here this evening because there's no public participation inside the chamber? Were you here for public participation?
I was.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions on nothing, anything not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda nine, discuss and review the correspondence received regarding a 9/11 memorial. So, I think we had conversation about this issue multiple times within the last year. And again, I'll reiterate the correspondence that was sent to us by Michael J. Coughlin, former town manager of the town of Southbridge, July 17th, 2020. Dear Chairperson Jovan, as you may recall, I'm not going to read the whole letter. He said, last month, he was informed by Council Chairman Steve Lauzel that little was being done. As such, I kindly requested written update and timetable to inform the public. As you know, the 19th anniversary of the Day of Information is approaching. So, I think we had many conversations about this. I put this on the agenda because I know Counselor Adams wanted to respond to the question that was proposed that evening, and I said that we would put this on the agenda to have a conversation. I did invite former Chairman Steve Lauzel to be present here because we know the limitations of our audio, and I personally invited him to be here in the chambers because it was part of the agenda to address any questions. I did see Mr. Coughlin online, but now he's gone. So, I will invite first up Mr. Lauzel to address what his stance on this is, and then we can have some questions posed or dialogue. So, Mr. Lauzel, thank you and welcome.
Well, thank you. My name's Steve Lauzel, 70 Genesis Street. I want to say good evening to the council, the town manager, and Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to Jack for personally telling me about the meeting tonight and posting on the agenda. As some of you know, for about a year, I've been in contact with former town manager, Coughlin, about this 9/11. I approached him and said, I asked him what he wanted to do. As some people know and some don't, I was very instrumental, very instrumental in doing the honor roll at no cost to the town. We did, I did it from start to finish, and we got it done. So, I feel that this 9/11 monument, like other towns have, it should be generic and with no certain names listed, but to recognize first responders and the people who perished in that terrible incident. So, why I'm here is looking for a nod from the councilors so that I can feel that they are behind this, and I would start a committee, figure out what we're going to do, what we're going to put out, and come back to council with it. And what we're basically looking is for a spot of land to put it on town property. I've been in contact with Counselor Adams. I've been to some of his meetings, veterans' meetings. I went to one of the veterans' meetings, and he was very helpful. And this, I just want to say that the chastising of councilors and the chairman, I didn't agree with. I've known Mr. Coughlin a long time. We disagree on our political views, but I'm willing to do this for the town, and if any questions, I'd be happy to answer, answer any of them.
Okay. Mr. Coughlin has joined us back live. He is not a resident of the town, but giving, we would have to entertain a motion to waive the rules and allow him to speak for three minutes.
Some move.
Because I think it's important that Mr. Coughlin be given the opportunity to address this council, given the multitude of Facebook posts that he has done to chastise this council for taking inaction on this project, which we stated that we, a year ago, that we would move to, and we had a lot of discussions throughout the year about this, and with Mr. Lauzel. So, there's a motion to waive the rules and allow Mr. Coughlin three minutes to address the council. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Sheaves?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Coughlin, we've waived the rules to allow you three minutes as per the charter to address the council on this agenda item. It was unanimous of everybody present to allow you the opportunity to speak to this item. So, the floor is yours.
I tell you, that is a good vote because the last time I addressed the council on December 23rd, 2002, it wasn't so favorable to me. But that vote, how many years ago, opened up a new opportunity for me because I was able to see three different communities around the Commonwealth. And may I say, Mr. St. Angelo, that his comments are spot-on. I can say, from being town manager of three other communities, Southbridge has some very, very special people and some character all its own. Sometimes when you're in Southbridge, you don't appreciate it until you get out and see what the other communities have to offer. So, I think it's the best days are ahead. I think, given the fact that you're bringing in a new town manager, that's no disrespect, disrespectful to Mr. St. Angelo. He's done a great job, but sometimes you need to pass the torch. That said, one of the things that I saw going to other communities is that they did have a 9/11 memorial. And what was ironic to me was they did not send any of their own people there, but they honored the event, and they honored their fellow police officers and first responders. Let me say this. Yes, I've been dogged in my determination to get this in front of the council, and I apologize for any feathers I ruffled. But about a year ago, after I first ruffled the feathers and nothing happened, Steve Lauzel reached out to me. I don't disagree. Steve's right. We don't agree on politics. But this is a bipartisan effort, and it should be a bipartisan effort. It's not based on politics. It's based on getting the job done. And that's all we want to do. 19 years of forgetfulness is enough. They should have been remembered a long time ago. That said, I'm not dictating that there'll be individual members honored. I do have my preference. I have several preferences, but they all are just preferences. All I want to do is get this thing done. Would you mind, minder, just- With the reminder, just remember this, and we've been damn lucky about this. Uh, 10,000, about 10,000 people, uh, showed up at Ground Zero. 2,000 of those, uh, first responders are dead. You do the math, that's a 20% casualty count, unprecedented, uh, in disasters. Now, we sent a team down there, um, led by Danny Turek, who later became Chief of Norman Broder, the detective sergeant, that went beyond, above and beyond the call of duty. They were the first from the state to respond and they are in a special classification, but they don't have to be individually named. They can be generically named. Let me also say, uh, as a former army officer, as we all know, there's the tip of the sword and then there's those that support the sword. And, uh, our town departments, and we honored them, uh, in Twilight, uh, candlelight ceremony on the common, on 9/11. And we recognized that it wasn't only the, um, officers that went down. Yes, they went down and they served, but it was also those that stayed behind, those that supported, the, uh, police officers we deployed on the streets on 9/11. The DPW putting up, uh, jersey barriers, uh, all over critical sites. Remember at that time, the DPW had to, uh, patrol, um, the, uh, water, uh, resources. The fire department was out in, in force. One of the finest nights ever I saw above Southbridge and it really dovetailed on what, uh, town manager St. Angelo said. That night at the, uh, candlelight, uh, service, uh, down at the pavilion on the town common, um, the chief of police spoke, the fire chief spoke, Amy Clark, the DPW directors, uh, spoke. We were united and that's how it should be tonight. I just want to bring this to your attention, uh, and, uh, get a positive vote or a commitment or a green light from, uh, the, uh, um, town council and, and pass this over to Steve to do the job he wants. Uh, I, that's my, uh, honor, uh, and privilege as, uh, the former town manager to do. I sent those guys down. It was on my, uh, approval. Uh, I, uh, as a commanding officer, uh, all those men, uh, at least, uh, tried to have them recognized. And I feel that a generic, uh, memorial, uh, can do that without naming names, uh, you know, but it's up to you. And, uh, that's all I, I wanna say. I wanna thank you for the, uh, opportunity to address the town council. Uh, Southbridge, uh, despite, uh, I'm not living there, as you know, Jack, uh, um, you know, my Southbridge roots go, uh, beyond just being a town manager. Uh, you work with my wife, uh, you know that, uh, I love this community and I just want to address, uh, that tonight and that's my only interest in bringing this up.
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. I did give you a few more minutes and I appreciate your comments. So, thank you. I appreciate the council's indulgence not to interrupt, uh, Mr. Coughlin by giving him additional minutes without, um, part of the council. So, I appreciate, uh, your support on that because I do think-
Well, yeah, I'm sure I'm always long-winded. I'm, I apologize for that.
Yeah. So, councillor Katrona, you wanted to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you very briefly, um, to, um, Mr. LaRozzo, uh, I would fully support this and/or, uh, setting up, uh, some type of a, of a, of a group. Um, obviously, we have to find funding. Would be probably the biggest issue, donations, funding, um, as well as not putting individual names, just a, a simple memorial. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor, I could give you a list of names who donated to the honor roll and I'm sure they would be happy to donate to this also.
Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first I wanna address, I probably have more questions after I'm done here, but I wanna thank, uh, Mr. LaRozzo for reaching out to me the last couple of days and I think we're on the same sheet of music. Um, I, and I appreciate that and the candor and the honest conversation you and I had over the phone last couple of times and even before that. And, uh, I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware out there and this is addressed to Mr. Coughlin at this point in time. Over a year ago, I offered to help you. Over a year ago, the Veterans Council offered to help you and you made it very clear to me that you were gonna go right through to the chair and that you're going right to the commanding officer of this unit, which is not, uh, by the way, I wanna make it very clear, it's not a military unit, it's a civilian side of the house. I offered to help you through this whole thing that we could work one-on-one and you made it very clear you wanted nothing to do with it. You were gonna put those names on there and had no problem putting those names on there. So, we've gone back and forth and I made it very clear tonight. My question to you is, where is your plan now that it seems to have changed? If you've got a plan, a size, a location, any good military guy would come in technically and tactically proficient, ready to go with some plans. And I'm asking that question at this point in time.
So, um, thank you. I'm not sure if he could have heard that, but, um, I know this is a passionate conversation that we're having this evening. Um, I certainly have my thoughts on the whole process that went down and I made my feelings very clear as you have councillor Adams. I, I think the frustrating part of this whole thing was, and I chose and I, I made it very clear that I'm not gonna engage in a Facebook battle with anybody relative to how we operate in the town of Southbridge. That's not how we do business. We do it here in the dais. Um, so, I think some of the questions that I have concerns that I would like to address as well and to you and I know I've had, and thank you for reaching out to me as well, Mr. LaRozzo, the conversation that we had as to some of the comments that you were frustrated because the council wasn't taking any action, but there was no action to talk about because we talked a year ago about developing a group and we've had conversations through trustees about different, uh, items, fire station building committee, uh, a group to try to make this come to fruition, um, with the thoughts, but it was that you had a plan and that there was a plan in place and the council was stopping you from moving forward. And to councillor Adams' point because it has been brought that you were the person that had the plan and we were stopping you, what is the plan? Is there a plan? That's what we're trying to find out.
I'm not frustrated, uh, by anything, um, that was, that was said on, by someone on Facebook. Um, with the COVID going on and stuff like that, it kinda like stalled. Um, as of right now, there is no written plan for it, but the reason why I came tonight is to straighten this whole Facebook mess out that was, uh, uncalled for as far as I'm concerned. Uh, my name was thrown around and I didn't appreciate it. Uh, with that said, if the town council would possibly entertain me coming back later with a plan now with what we're gonna put up, that depends on how many donations we get and the size of it will be, what the size will be. And then I would come back and, uh, bring it to you and you put it on the agenda and you can discuss it probably even in subcommittee. Um, that's where I'm at.
So, councillor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just-
You're gonna have to speak up really because it's very difficult to hear you, councillor Steves, councillor Mike. You're so soft spoken that you really have to get there and enunciate. It's very difficult.
Um, I apologize, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, I, I guess my question is, I, I have no problem with the idea of this. Only thing is, I worry about is finances for this. As we're going through right now with COVID, I just wonder if now is the appropriate time to be having this discussion and we may have to actually logistically look at where in our budget we may have to cut, cuts depending on revenues. So, that's my only concern is, is there gonna be a plan for this to be privately funded? Is it gonna be run from grants? Like, that's the only thing and that's why I think it's really important that we have a fully fleshed out plan coming before us so that way we're, because there's so much, um, information and sometimes misinformation going around on this right now. We, uh, it's very, uh, jarring at times trying to figure out where this is going. So, I think having some sort of concrete plan after this whole pandemic thing is through would be the way, that would be the, the best course of action.
I understand your concerns about finance. Um, like I said, with the honor roll, there was no cost to the town and this wouldn't be any cost to the town. It, the monument depends on donations, uh, from businesses, uh, and like, like I said, I could name a lot of them that did help with the honor roll. Um, and that's how I would do it for financing.
Okay.
And the amount of financing that we could, donations we get will be, dictate what the monument looks like. Until I get that in process, then I will be back with the plan. And then you can look at it and approve of it and we could get a spot. It's not gonna happen overnight, believe me. Um, it's not gonna happen by 9/11, which was, Mr. Coughlin said that won't happen. I know it won't happen because it, I know what it takes, what it takes to do it. Uh, but I don't wanna leave it on the back burner and I'll be on it all the time. I'll be in contact with councillor Adams because I, his expertise on what he knows and, uh, I'll be in contact with the chairman. And maybe we can get this thing done. Like I said, not overnight, but I'd like to get it up for the first responders and the people that perished at 9/11. And that's the way it is. That's what I, that's why I'm here.
Councillor Steves?
Um, yeah, um, I was thinking, I was curious just a little bit-
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Okay, I was kind of curious a little bit about how, I, if you and, and Mr. Coughlin have been talking about this for a while. Um, I was curious if you have any particular image in mind at this point of what you hope it'll look like, um, what, what kind of your, what your target would be for fundraising. And, um, I was also, I, I personally think it would be not a bad idea to put our local residents' names on that because they were the ones who went there. I personally think that's a good idea, but-
Okay.
Any thoughts on that?
What it would look like is, so, I've been to a, a couple of other towns that have these. Um, you can purchase a piece of a metal, twisted metal from the skyscrapers and you could mount them on a base, a concrete base and put the plaque, make a plaque and put it on the bent piece of metal as a remembrance of the 9/11. And we would have a piece of the tower. Um, I've seen that and it's not a very big item. It's probably about this tall. It's on a concrete base, not gonna go anywhere. Um, and then you could do some pavers around it and probably a couple of shrubs or whatever to make it look nice. Um, it's not gonna be a, a huge monument, but it, there will be a piece of, what we're looking at is a piece of metal from the, the buildings.
Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, one, to answer councillor Ryan's question, I mean, I definitely, I agree with Mr. LaRozzo. It wouldn't be something that the town taxpayers pay for unless they wanna, would like to donate funds for that. And it's not always a very exp, it's not expensive at all. It's just the process of going around doing it, make sure we do it legally correct, especially if, if the town gifts a little bit of parcel land for it. Um, one thing that we discussed today was the fact that, you know, it's a, it's a bit and piece, one of these things that, Mr. Councillor Steves had brought up, utilizing the trustees board, but we gotta be careful because the trustees board is strictly for veterans. So, one of those things is, is if the monument falls within the veterans, that's fine. If it doesn't, you know, then we have to, it's completely first responders, citizens, you know, whatever it may be. So, we gotta be very careful about that as well. Um, it, it, like I said, it's not a hard process of just trying to find out the location where we would like to have it. You know, when we talked about putting it in the memorial park, uh, because the VFW is working on one as well. The VFW can easily change it from a 9/11 to a war on terror, um, monument in a sense, as far as that's concerned, strictly for veterans. So, there's a lot of things that we can do and manipulate and have it work for our favor and also show, you know, the respects for those first responders that day and those citizens in Shanksville and those individuals at the Pentagon that were military and first responders and, uh, citizens as well or civilians and then as well as New York City. So, um, you know, there's so many things that, I just think there has to be a good plan.
Yeah.
Mr. LaRozzo and I, that, that, I think that'll work, especially with his expertise as well. A good plan, solid plan to bring and maybe even a course action one or a course action two. So, um, hopefully that answers some questions and put minds at ease a little bit about how this process will work.
Thank you. Councillor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For you, uh, it seems like everybody agree on the fund, it's coming from donation. Uh, what I understood is the question, what it's gonna be put on? If the name of the, the people volunteer want to New York or it's gonna be something just regarding the whole town of Southbridge. And, and I think if we continue, uh, the way we're going, we're never gonna, uh, found a solution. I think, uh, I agree with councillor Adam, uh, put like a plan, a picture what it's gonna be on and bring it back to us and then we can change, update and go forward. The way it's going, it's never gonna end. You know, everybody, you know, there's nothing to work on. We have nothing, uh, except-
That's exactly why I showed up tonight, so we can get this thing rolling, uh, councillor. Um, so, as soon as I, like I said, I get this thing together, I will be back in front of the council and discuss this whole item again with plan and what it's supposed to look like.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Steves?
I'm, I was just curious if you have, if you guys have tried to reach out to like the local arts community and maybe get some unique ideas for such, what, what a monument like that might look like. Just, just an idea to throw out there. Cause we might be able to find somebody who could come up with a, a really unique thing that would be, that would be, that would kind of stand out and still express, um, those kinds of things. So-
But, like I said, I saw it in other towns and it's, it's something that I would throw out there. Doesn't have to be permanent. I mean, you guys could vote on that after if what you wanna look, you know, what you want it to look like. Um, just give me another idea. I'm open to ideas. Um, I just, that, we, I saw some other towns and that's what I thought looked, looked pretty nice. Uh, but I'm open. Um, get this thing rolling and, and I'll be back.
All right. So, and just in closing on this item, the reason it was put here, so we have dialogue and I appreciate the fact that councillor LaRozzo's here and I appreciate the fact that former town manager, Coughlin, is online for this. I, I think, we stated a year ago, over a year ago, that we supported some type of memorial, but what would that memorial look like? Do we honor, I, I'm all for the fact and I'm proud of the fact that we had five individuals in a police department that went down to 9/11 to assist on a tragic, tragic event. But since that date, there's been many people that have gone off to war, have served our country, have joined the military based on those fateful days. Family members of all of us that because of that event when they were so young, a specific family member of mine who now is 26 years of age, was seven years old, decided to join the military and serve his country, just like, unlike everybody else that may have family members because of that fateful day. As a police officer, a first responder, police chief responsible for the lives of police officers that I would send into battle every day to serve our communities, I am an advocate of public safety. I think we should be proud of the fact that we sent first responders there. But make no mistake, as a police officer and I'm sure, I'm not gonna speak for the chief of police, we don't do this job for the pat on the back that says, "Hey, I was the first one in that door." Should we remember that fateful day? Yes. And I think I made that comment very clear a year ago that, but what would this monument look like? We should remember the past about the people that served our town and went there, but we also can't forget all those people that perished that day. Honor their memories. Honor all the first responders that ran into battle that were able to survive. All those first responders that died as a result of, uh, cancer and every other, uh, imaginable disease because of that. And all those first responders that served every single day to protect our residents in a time where first responders, police officers are taken on the chin right now. So, I certainly support this. I never have not supported this. A year ago, when this came up, we were told that it was passed off to Mr. LaRozzo, former chairman LaRozzo. Great, come up with a plan, we'll support it, let's figure it out. Then we had talks throughout the year as to fire station building committee. As chair of the fire station building committee, do we look at that building project and perhaps incorporate a 9/11 memorial into the fire station building committee? Councillor Adams and I have had conversations because of his work through the Veterans Council and the trustees board, that we've had a couple of locations that we've brought through the council for fire station as to a possibility that it may have to go exist, uh, at the existing site. And to do that, we would have to move a memorial. And perhaps we reconfigure the memorial park and to incorporate a- and to incorporate a nine eleven memorial or some, something within that park. So there's a lot of ideas, but this council fully supports anyone that wants to come up. I know I do as Chair. Anyone that wants to come forward for a memorial and would support that endeavor. And my understanding was it was passed off and we would have a plan. So I appreciate, I will work with you, former Chairman Lazo, to get this to fruition. Yes, we as a council have had a lot on our plate this past year. COVID-19 was and still is and will continue to be a pressing issue. So I think in that respect, sorry, in that respect, I fully support this, but I needed to make those failings of mine clear as a first responder, as a former chief of what nine eleven meant to me, as well as those officers and firefighters that I served with every day and continue to serve with in this community as well. So with that, did anybody have anything else?
Yeah.
Counselor Adams?
Just, I just want to, again, thank everybody for bringing this up and we haven't forgot about it. Nobody has here. One thing is, for those first responders that took such a beating that day in the Pentagon and, and at, at New York City, you know, we also can't forget those residents, those civilians, those individuals that came in there and worked for twenty-four straight hours just trying to find their brothers and sisters that were a block away. And we can't forget the fact that Southbridge had a lot of people here that were contractors that went right down there to help out and help move some of that stuff, that, that debris. So we can't forget about those individuals. And that's why I have no problem doing a generic one, also recognizing, I know the town of Southbridge has recognized those other individuals that went down there, which I'm very proud of. And the New York City of the state of New York has also recognized those individuals as well. So if, if you didn't know that, they have already done that. But nothing like inviting those people back. It's a groundbreaking. And by the way, if, you know, Counselor Lazo or former Counselor Lazo and I talked about this, was putting it in a temporary location once approved by the Town Council, because if there was a fire station or to be built, then maybe it'd be easily moved to one place to another. And I think that's one of our ideas as well. So appreciate Mr. Chair putting on the agenda this evening. And again, Mr. Lazo, thank you for coming all the way down here.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the councilors tonight. And Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for inviting me and we'll be back.
Thank you.
I just last, on the last thing, I'd like to say to the Town Manager, I wish you the best in your future endeavors and I enjoyed working with you through the DPW Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Agenda Item 10. Vote to appoint Michelle Conners, the Animal Control Officer in Sturbridge, as an alternate animal inspector for the town of Southbridge for a one-year period effective immediately through June thirtieth, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Chief Woodson.
Good evening again, members of council, Mr. Town Manager. So what this is, when our Animal Control Officer, Caitlin Spencer, is on vacation, she needs to be covered under the Animal Control Officer Mutual Aid Agreement, there's no issue. We have neighboring ACOs cover her all the time. The issue becomes under the Inspector of Animals. When Ms. Spencer's on vacation, we can't just have anybody come in the community acting on, acting as an inspector of animals without being appointed by the governing body. So what would happen is if in the past, when they've come to our community, if they had to enforce an order, a quarantine order, they couldn't take any action on behalf of the state unless they were authorized by the Town Council and voted in every year. This was just brought to my attention recently by our ACO. Thank you for that. So we're addressing it tonight. Again, it's not replacing Ms. Spencer, nothing to that effect. Just when she has time off, we need to have an alternate inspector of animals.
Any questions? Counselor Steve?
I mean, I have no problem with this. I was just curious, how often has that been an issue? Like, this is the first time it's ever come up as an alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It, it has not been an issue yet. This is more of a preemptive strike in case it ever is an issue.
Okay.
Trying to cover all the bases.
Thank you. Any further questions? CNN Roll Call?
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote to confirm the reappointment of Evelyn Rivera as the municipal hearing officer for a six-month period effective immediately through January thirty-first, 2021, according to the Mass General Law, Chapter 148A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Counsel Ryan?
Just a question. Why is this just a six-month appointment instead of a year?
I believe it was to, go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
There's a, there's a, a process we're going through to pressure all of these appointments to make sure they get the required training. So we're giving the six months to ensure that the training is done. I'll say this, though, the COVID situation has really slowed down the training ability because there's not, is, is not, not a lot of onsite training like there used to be. But we want to pressure not only these members, but as you've probably seen in the past, I think you were doing things to make sure they get their ethics training before we appoint them. So it follows that same suit.
So there's specific training related to this that she needs to get?
There is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Steve?
If I could follow up on that, then. She's been hearing officer for some time now. How long has she been in and she still hasn't gotten the training?
I think the process, and, and I haven't looked deeply into this, and I understand there's been other discussions, but, but there's regular training, as you know, even ethics training you have to do on an annual basis.
Yeah.
So it's regular training and, and I know that my secretary Yvonne was concerned that she hadn't been able to do the training because of the COVID thing and the training, she hasn't done it in quite some time. So she wanted to make sure that in this case that she got the training done.
And I'm curious, how many, roughly how many cases does she have to handle a year?
There, there are not a lot of cases. I don't know the exact number, but this is not a very busy type job. That's why the stipend is very low, but it is a requirement to have in place. So somebody has to do it.
Okay.
Counsel Ryan? We all said, Counselor?
I, I have one more question. And also has any, and since we're looking at reappointment, I know some of the, some of the other councils in the past have thrown out the idea of, of looking for people, just other, other people who might be interested. Has anybody ever felt, you know, kind of felt around and see if anybody else is interested and, and qualified to do this?
So unlike other appointments that are general public things, these are really employee kind of positions that we do. So no other employee has made it aware that they're interested in doing this. Again, it's a very small stipend. It's, to most people, it's kind of annoying that they have to do it. It's not something that's considered fun. She's been kind enough to do it. I know there's been some questions as a result in animal control kind of hearings that we've been working through myself, the council chairman and the animal control officer. I think that also is something that we want to work on. I'll, I'll leave it at that for, for this conversation, but it is something we want to continue to look at and work on.
Well, as I understand it, to follow up with that directly, I believe in our animal control bylaw changes, don't we take that authority as counsel, if I remember correctly?
I'm sorry, could you speak louder?
If I remember correctly, didn't we, with the way we changed the, the animal control bylaws, didn't we say that, that the council would end up being the hearing officer for that, those particular issues?
I'd have to defer that question to the police chief. I don't remember that.
I remember exactly. It's been a long time since I talked about that particular issue, but I remember we talked about it in Subcommittee as one of the possibilities, so.
Any changes in the bylaw? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chief?
Yes, sir. So, Counselor Steve, could you just repeat the question, please?
I was saying, I was saying that, as I recall from discussions during GenGov, we had thrown around ideas of having the council take over the hearings for those, for, for at least for dog officer type hearings and that the council itself would do it. I know most other towns, the, the Board of Selectmen are the hearing officers for those kinds of issues. So I remember we talked about that. I don't remember what we ended up deciding to do because it was a long time ago, so.
If I could, Mr. Chair, answer that. Don't, you're, I think you're confusing the two. That was a dangerous dog hearing.
Right, exactly.
We were going to take an order on whether or not to euthanize an animal.
Yes.
That had, in my understanding of that, is that had nothing to do with what Ms. Velez does at the hearing level with 21D violations and things like that. She's the hearings officer for the community. So if a police officer issues a citation for an unshovelled sidewalk after a snowstorm and they appeal the citation, it would go through Ms. Velez. So she has many other duties, in my opinion, other than just the dog.
Right. Well, I understood that. I was cur, I was curious that, because we, because we were specifically referring to that particular issue, so. And the other issues, I understand that she does this other stuff too, so. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Ryan?
I just, I wanted to ask one more follow-up question, which was, how often is this training required?
How often is what required?
How often is this training required that Ms. Rivera?
Yeah, I, I'm truthfully not sure. Yvonne just talked to me and said that, that there is training available for that, that because of the COVID, she has not been able to take it and, and that we felt it was necessary to not appoint her for the full year to make sure that she got the required training. But I didn't get into a whole conversation with Yvonne about the, you know, what the training was and when it's available. She was looking at it and it was a discussion to at least temporarily do for six months and we can do it. This is a very easy appointment. We can do another six months in a year and once we're comfortable with all the training is done, we could do a full year appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So she's the only person make decision on the hearing?
If I, if I, through you, yes, correct. She's the hearings officer.
And you feel comfortable with only one person make a decision on something like that?
I do. And through you, Mr. Chair, what it is, is it basically sets up similar to a clerk's hearing at a court where you have a neutral party come in and she's acting in the best interest of the community. Like, I could not have a police officer there, obviously, because we, there appear to be a bias there for a citation. Now, one of our fellow police officers issues, so we wouldn't have a police officer making that decision. And hence, that's the reason why we bring in Evelyn from the clerk's office, neutral party. She hears both sides and makes a decision. I feel comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? CNN Roll Call?
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
No.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
No.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
What's that vote? Did I count?
Uh, five, nope. Yeah, five to three. Noes. Three noes.
For the record, because you're supposed to announce the negative by the bylaws, Jovan, Steve and Adams voted no. Item 12. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Virginia Rappo to the Southbridge Cultural Council effective immediately through June thirtieth, 2023, pending completion of the state ethics training.
So moved.
Second.
I got to finish reading the whole agenda, please. According to local regional council guidelines and Town Charter, Section 3-207. Again?
Second, yes.
You moved it?
Yes.
Ryan? Motion second. Discussion. This was held over from the last Agenda, uh, last meeting and it does meet all the requirements. So that was checked.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, I had it held just because I wanted to make sure because there had been issues about, or I had concerns about the fact that the state law specifically said you can only do a certain amount of time. I just wanted to make sure it was okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
It was verified and there was an email sent out again today if you got that, so. Any further discussion? Roll Call?
Counselor Dow?
What was that?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13. Vote to accept the warrant for the state primary election scheduled for Tuesday, September first, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Counselor Steve?
I just wanted to clarify for everybody because the, if you notice that the text in your packets is not the exact text that we signed because the original, the original said Representative of Congress, Second District, we're actually First District. The one that, the one that went around that Matty had you sign said First District because I had pointed it out to her. So she brought around the corrected, corrected copy, just so you know.
I could see why that was an issue because it used to be the Second District.
A long time ago we were, but it's been ten years since we were, it's like Second District. I'd rather it be Second District personally, but.
Any further discussion? CNN Roll Call?
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 14. Vote to approve the Mass Works Grant application for the Southbridge Innovation Center infrastructure improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I'm going to turn this over to Planning Development Chairman, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you don't mind, I don't know if Rosemary's on here at all.
I believe she called in and Chip is here as well to answer any questions.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. I get.
I don't think Chip's, Chip, I don't think you're going to be able to hear Counselor Adams. He's just going to give a brief overview of his meeting, okay?
Look, we are, I can't. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, okay. So first of all, I appreciate Chip and his team being here. This is our third brief on the same subject, the Mass Works Grant for the American Optical, the old American Optical across the way. Originally, just so you know, this third brief, Chip Norton gave a PowerPoint presentation in the month of June to the council, the whole. Also, he gave a PowerPoint, him and his team gave a PowerPoint presentation to the August fourth Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting. I just want to make the record, it was a three-zero vote in favor of. Tonight, he's here to answer any questions you may have or if we can at this point. I also have a hard copy if you need to take a look at the PowerPoint presentation, but all the town councilors have been presenting it. I believe it's on the town website as well. So this is part of an eight million dollar Public Works, in a sense, grant that Chip Norton and his team are working on to better that area. That, that eight million dollars, this Mass Works Grant is four million. It's a, it's an application at this point in time to the state. This four million dollars Mass Works Grant will consist of roads, bridges, signage, kayaking areas, the pond, the, the trails and it'll all be, be able to be accessed by the public itself. And that's the only reason he can actually apply or we on his behalf can apply to the state for this public grant. We did, just so you know, know the Town Manager had sent this off, the covenant that I sent out last week, which is kind of the agreement Mr. Norton is going to agree upon for, I believe it's a thirty-year covenant at that point in time for, for the town itself. Our, our counsel, our legal counsel had some questions, put that in writing. Rosemary sent that over to Mr. Norton. Mr. Norton agreed on all of them. It is now in that covenant that you received last week. Any changes that may be, if you want me to take a look at those, to give those, those concerns of our legal counsel, I, I can. And I just give you a quick overview. Again, it was a three-zero vote. We've been talking about this for quite, quite some time, from its conception to, to where we're at right now. And if you have any questions for me or, or Mr. Norton or the Town Manager?
Mr. Town Manager?
So I, I want to comment on this because I think this is an important project. And it's unusual in terms of Southbridge, in terms of applying for this large of a Mass Works project. And I think it's important to understand the value to this community of that particular facility. I think everyone here recognizes we don't have a lot of land available for new construction, so to speak, for new manufacturing facilities. I think, and I'll let Chip speak to the specifics, but a little over fifty percent of that whole site is up and running and it serves this community very well in terms of employees, in terms of generating tax revenues. I think it's a great site. But the, this particular site has huge opportunities over the long term for it. When you go to the governor's office of the state for a grant of this nature, you have to have clout. You have to have a plan in place to demonstrate your ability to be able to pull off this kind of project. Very few developers have that kind of clout, have that kind of ability to bring this type of plan forward. Chip Norton has that ability and he's proven it by work he's done in Worcester. If this was some other developer who never did this before, this was kind of the first time out of the box, I would be less likely to support such a plan. You guys have all seen the presentation. It's awesome in terms of the infrastructure and what he's looking to do to the future. And the long-term benefits to the town are extraordinary in terms of being able to utilize that site for recreation, for any kind of positive activities. And frankly, just the enhancement of the infrastructure would allow him to get more businesses in there to fill up that park and create more jobs and more tax revenue to the town. So there's all kinds of benefit for this. Now, the simple truth is, the, the big issue here is going to be, what does the state think about this project? Because we're asking for the state. There's no big local money here. It's really all, will the state give four million dollars towards this project? Again, that's not an easy decision for the state, but because of his experience in this area, and I'm talking again about Chip Norton, I think he can pull this off. And that's really critical to have this kind of investor, this kind of person leading the charge for this project who has demonstrated business experience in getting this done. I have said to Counselor Adams, and I want to say it to everybody, you know, we have the ability to apply for these Mass Works Grants and we usually apply for, I think we, we did about five hundred thousand dollars in the past for one project. This is four million. This is significantly bigger. And it may, it means that we're not going to be able to apply for a Mass Works for any other company right away if this is going to go forward. I happen to believe that this project has such a big impact to the future of the town that I think this is the key project we should move forward on. Chip can talk about the specifics, but we've talked about this and every counselor has indicated they like the concept of this. And I think this can get done. I'm hoping that one day I come back to Southbridge or I'm not sure what my future is, but to see what that facility will look like if this project ever gets done. And I'm, I'm going to be very proud for the small role that I played in it. But this is like very few projects happen in state. And usually projects like this happen in bigger cities where you have real clout, political clout. To have this kind of project in town, in Southbridge, which is a very small city, I think is tremendous to have that opportunity. So I thank you. I wanted to comment about that and I'll leave any other part of that to, to Chip or his people to explain or answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I just want to, one question we asked at the Planning Development was how, what's going to pay for the other half, possibly in the other half as part of, if you take a look at the application itself, it's an EDA application that they'll have to put in through the town as well, would have to sponsor that as well. So that would cover the eight million dollars. I know he mentioned a few other.
a few other things, um, that may offset it, but just wanted you to know that it may be coming through Planning Development once again, back up to the town council, maybe cover that other half of that, uh, those funds, so.
Counselor Ryan?
I, I just wanna clarify, you, you may have to come back to council for the remaining $4 million?
So, no, 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 so, no, not, not, it was not gonna come from taxpayer.
Okay.
So, in order to make, like, like the town manager says, I know you've dealt with this on General Gov, to, as far as a public grant is concerned, the town has to apply for it, and this is something new to all of us here, I know, uh, Mr. Norton has done it in Worcester, if you, I believe it's the DCU Center, the garage is over there where the public can use it, but that, I believe that belongs to him, actually, privately, but, um, to get those type of grant money, we, we have to kinda, we have to have our backing.
We're acting as the middleman.
Correct.
So, it's half coming, the formulae will come from him, and then formulae from the state, is the idea for this?
No, so, this Mass Works Grant will come, that $4 million, this EDA program, and Mr. Norton could probably explain a little bit better than I could, if he can.
But is, the total cost $8 million?
Total cost is $8 million.
So $4 million's coming from him, then, and then $4 million's coming from?
So I'm gonna let, let Mr. Norton explain that, so I don't.
Good evening, Chip, and I apologize, you know, technology, I think, is something we're gonna be working on in the future, so the question is, uh, $4 millions of, uh, $4 million of your overall project is $8 million, correct, and $4 million will be Mass Works Dan, uh, grants, and the other one portion is coming through EDA, can you just give a brief update on that financing package, if you could?
Sure, so, um, we're actually preparing the EDA package now, uh, the Mass Works Package is a one-time-a-year submission, August 28th, so that's what we're preparing for. EDA is a rolling application process, anytime, so the, right now, we're working on EDA, and this application would go on on the 28th, I suspect we'll get the EDA application by mid-September, late September is subject to the town's approval.
Okay, thank you, could you just, for the record, what is EDA?
Um, Economic Development Administration.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Counselor Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm not sure to the town manager, um, I don't know if Rosemary's online, does this eliminate us for applying for any future grants? Is there anything, is there more money available to us? For example, we have the, we have the, the Mill Street Projects coming online, and they're going to be looking at grants as well, so I want to be sure that this doesn't eliminate us.
Okay. Mr. Town Manager?
So, so the clear answer is no. The only grant that I think it could have impact is on, on if we wanted to have another company do a Mass Works Grant, but in terms of all other grants, I don't think it has any impact whatsoever.
But specifically for Mass Works Grants?
So, so let's say, another company in town wanted to apply this year for a Mass Works Grant, it would probably be rejected, we would have to, the town would have to set a priority for what we're asking for, because there's not unlimited state funds under the Mass Works Program. So I think next year, they could apply, but I think in terms of this year, you can't apply for, specifically, I consider, I think, the amount of this particular grant, I don't think you'd apply for three or four different companies, we're asking a lot for a $4 million Mass Works Grant. Now, truthfully, there's only been one other company that even talked to me about a Mass Works Grant, so I don't think this is a problem. If that company chooses to apply next year, they'd be welcome to do it, but there's not, like, 50 companies requesting Mass Works money, because it's mostly for infrastructure-type projects, and it, you can't just ask for any kind of grant, it's specifically for infrastructure.
I just wanna be sure that Rosemary, or the, the Economic Development Department, that they are reaching out as well, not just one particular entity that they're reaching out to, that they reach, that she's reaching out to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steve?
To follow up on that question, through you, to the manager.
Can you speak up, please?
Uh, it's a follow-up on that question, through you, to the managers, um, can the town as a whole apply for a Max, Mass Works Grants without a private developer as a sort of co-partner? If we wanted to do other stuff that we wanted, that we needed to do?
So the answer, I think, and I'm not Rosemary, I wanna point that out, she's the more expert in this area, but my understanding of Mass Works is designed as an infrastructure grant, that the town could work with it, the town could work with a business to apply for this grant for infrastructure-type of issues. So I would say, at least in my opinion, that, yeah, it has to be a business that comes forward and looks for something. Mass Works is designed, as I understand it, to help economic development activities, just like, as you know, we did the, the other one.
Right.
Uh, was to help keep that business in town, and to help encourage expansion of that business.
Right.
The state uses a lot of these grants as a way to either attract business, or retain businesses, or to, mostly to get in-house businesses to expand, but that's generally my understanding of how the Mass Work Grant plays.
Heather can add something to it, obviously, since she's here.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Um, I know one component of a Mass Works Grant is you have to show that there could be, that there is a component that is going to increase the number of employees.
Right.
It's also, not just money and investment, it's also to show that there's going to be jobs created, not just during the construction, but also long-term. So, for us to apply for a grant like that, it's very difficult to show where those jobs would be created, because there has to be a commitment and projections of where those jobs would be done.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you, and I, I think, if you review the grant works application template, very, many of the questions are, does this project support imminent private development that is located? Does the project support imminent private development that creates new housing with density? So, it all is public-private partnerships, so, uh, any further questions for Chip or Rosemary? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
What was that? I can't hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes. Unanimous, while present. Congratulations, Chip, we look forward to working with you on this project, uh, this, uh, application passed unanimously, so you can follow up with the economic development and the town manager's office.
Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, and we look forward to that project, I, I really am excited about the development of that whole waterfront area and, uh, everything, I think, uh, the whole corridor, Main Street, all the way down, is gonna, uh, be a great upgrade in the next year, so we're excited about all this work, so, uh, good luck on that grant application. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Item 15, vote to ratify change order number one of the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Globe Village LLC to allow additional 60 days to complete the Big Bunny sign, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Counselor Adams, I guess we'll go to you, um, for.
That's fine.
Based on your meeting?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so just, uh, this went to the PND on August 4th as well, 3-0 vote on that one, um, it, Mrs. Dean had, gave us a little memorandum of the explanation behind it, uh, the original motion, though, was only for an extra 30 days, uh, though we, we, kinda based on our experience of kinda running over our time period, um, I did bring up the fact that maybe we should give them 60 days, doesn't hurt anything as far as that's concerned, and they don't have to come back just in case that there's a COVID issue, or a shutdown, or anything else that, that comes up, hopefully we'll mitigate that, and so we changed it from, uh, 30 days to 60-day extension, and so there's amendment to that motion, and it was recommend 3-0.
Anything further, Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add, obviously, well, I'll just say, we all know the owner of the Big Bunny, he's a longtime dedicated businessman in town, I think it's a great project, it's nice to see somebody who's committed to the town for a long time, uh, utilizes funds to improve their business, so it's, it's, it's not just new people, but existing people.
Mr. Chairman? Counselor Adams? It's just an extension of something that we have already approved already.
Yep. Anything further? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
And Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 16, vote to ratify change order number two for LeVengie Electric for the wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades in the amount of $27,323.99, with funding to come from project number 64680, repair concrete platforms and docks, and additional contract credit from the following agenda item, change order number three, is there a motion? There a motion?
So moved.
Second, discussion? I think Counselor Marquetti addressed this in his minutes, do you have anything else to add?
No.
With Town Manager?
I'm just gonna defer, if you have any questions, to the DPW Director, I think she did a very good job explaining all these issues in the DPW Subcommittee, a lot of questions were asked and answered in that meeting, uh, and I'll defer to her for any questions on the next four or five items.
Thank you. Any questions of the DPW Director on this project? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
And Counselor, that's it.
Okay, thank you, motion carries.
You've missed me.
Oh, I thought I already called you. Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Counselor Dow opposed. Item 17, vote to ratify change order number three for LeVengie Electric for the wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades for negative $50,500 credit and time extension on the contract to August 28th, 2020, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, any discussion, any questions with the DPW Director? Counselor Catrona?
The $50,000 change order, I'm sorry, I missed the Subcommittee meeting, $50,000 credit for?
Negative change order.
What?
So, $25,000 of it is a credit for an item that we didn't need, that was included in the contract, it was an allowance, and then the other, um, $25,500 is for, um, the time extension for, for liquidated damages.
Time extension for not meeting their deadline?
Time not meeting their deadlines, we were able to prove, and we have in the contract that they have to pay liquidated damages, and therefore we're hitting, that was an agreement with them for the liquidated damages for the extension, and that covers the cost of the next item, which is the extension in the engineering contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Motion carries. 18, vote to ratify Engineering Services Amendment number three for StanTech for Phase Two Electrical Upgrades for $25,500 to cover additional engineering contract services and oversight due to time extension on the LeVengie Electric contract, funds will be paid by the part of the credit received in change order number four with LeVandy Electric, is it, is it still, is it LeVengie as well? It's still, it's the same, right, so it's the same, LeVengie. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? Counselor Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the DPW Director, again, was, StanTech, StanTech was aware that they were going over, or did they notify yourself that they had gone over their, the contractual agreement to meet their deadlines?
StanTech had a contract set up for a certain period of time, a number of months, to provide construction oversight, and had extended that contract, actually, over the number of months that was agreed upon in the contract documents already, and this is just to cover the additional costs that weren't going to be able to cover it under their original contract, um, it, for additional two months of service.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Steve?
Um, yeah, through you, too, Heather, I'm just quick, since, since we talked about this at DPW, have you seen any more, um, concrete ideas of whether or not they will actually finish the work on time this time?
The last thing that they have left is, has to do with, they're testing the equipment.
Yep.
Um, I will say this right now, the weather is not cooperating with us, one of the things they have to test is called hot pot testing, and it's testing the main power coming in, um, three-phase, and it can't be done in hot, humid weather, so, I guess we're waiting for a cooldown.
Well, we're not gonna get that this week.
Any further discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
Well, this is something new that you just said, and maybe if they didn't go over, we wouldn't be in this.
Correct.
Predicament right now with them not being able to test, I would say, I, I agreed to go along with this, because I think it's, you're at the end of this project, I'd like to see it finished up, uh, I think that in the going, in the future, there's gotta be some way that we can cut back on these change orders like this, it's, it's.
Well, this is the way we're going back on the change orders, the engineer has no control over the contractor.
Yep.
The way you go after the change order is you hit the contractor with liquidated damages. This is the first contract that I've been able, we've been able to prove liquidated damages, so I wanna give them a lot of credit, most contracts, it's very difficult, and we did this during COVID, if there was ever a time that you can complain, could, could claim that there was extenuating circumstances, and some consideration was given to that, but, at some point, you have to look at their schedules and say, you did not meet your schedule, here is your original schedule, if you had met this original schedule, we wouldn't be in this situation.
Right.
So, we're, that is part of the reason we're asking for the extension, if it has to be extended more, we will ask for additional liquidated damages, that's the way that it has to proceed at this point.
All right.
They've worked with us, they didn't balk at the liquidated damages, I will give LeVengie credit, it was negotiated and said, you know, what we're asking for is you to cover the cost of the additional engineering services.
Any further?
So.
Roll call?
Counselor Catrona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Upstate.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries on 611 with Counsel Catrona voting no, Counsel Dow voting upstate. Item 19, vote to ratify the Engineering Services Amendment number one for tie bond Ashland Avenue Bridge replacement for right-of-way survey for easement and development of land acquisition plan related to the final replacement bridge design for $9,000 with funding from chapter 90. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Questions? Seen none? Roll call?
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And Counselor Catrona?
No.
Motion carries. Item 20, vote to ratify the modeling proposal from Dewberry for the South Street Waterline Design for $10,000 with funding from project number 63750, the South Street Water Main Design. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Questions? Comments? Counsel Marquetti?
This went through by a four to nothing vote to bring it up here to vote on, but there was some discussion during this, this agenda item that I thought was kind of interesting when Counsel Dow asked, why are these always even numbers? 10,000, why is it an even number? At the time, I didn't think much of the question, but after I was thinking about it, your answer was that because this was your allowance on the job. And I was wondering, why do we put down an allowance on a job? If you say, I'm going to give you $10,000 and that's it, they're going to bid $10,000, so why would we do that? Unless that's the way it has to be. I'm not quite, I'm not an expert on procurement laws and things, but...
I, I would like a chance to explain.
All right.
So the original bid for engineering services was sent to companies that didn't have our model. Dewberry had our model. In order to make it fair and a baseline, we estimated that the modeling would be a $10,000 allowance, so that everybody would include that as a baseline in their price. So Dewberry had to include that, everybody had to include that. So of course, when we go back to Dewberry, who maintains our model, they're going to use that number. I don't have any control over that. They're the only ones that have our model. To have someone else set up the model would take a lot of time, a lot of testing, and a lot of money, much more than $10,000. We don't have the time or the ability to have somebody remodel it at this stage, and I don't think that's prudent. Dewberry does a lot of tech, answers a lot of technical questions for us for nothing. And that's because they know they maintain our model. When we do a major project like this, they have to make updates and they have to run different scenarios. It's not just going on a computer and doing one click. So I do not have a problem paying them for the service to run these different options that are outlined in this document and provide that technical expertise so that we make sure that we're making the right decisions when we do a major $4 million upgrade to our water lines.
But the only, the only, if I could continue through you, Mr. Chairman, the only point I was trying to make is, why would we tell them how much?
You have to, you have to do that to keep it baseline average.
Okay.
So that everybody is playing on the same level playing field.
All right. Thank you.
Those procurement laws.
Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Heather, so are you saying that this company has monopoly on the model water main we use?
It's, they develop the model, they maintain the model. It's not a monopoly, it's, it's the technical information of the model. I don't have the technical expertise to house the model in-house. This is a complicated water model that you tweak something and go wrong, you could be putting a whole area out of, out of water by making a decision. So we have paid for them, I think it's over 20 years old. We've used this model in Charlton. When Charlton has looked to upgrade their water mains, they have had to pay directly, Exxon paid Dewberry directly to run all the modeling and associated with that, with the upgrade of the water mains there. It's, we use it when we do a major expansion, and because South Street, we are looking of eliminating, potentially eliminating one of the pipes, we need to know what our water system is going to do. Those are the main feed lines into the town. It may come back that we don't change anything, but at least we looked at it and looked at what the cost option, whether it was technically feasible.
Thank you.
Counselor Steve?
Under what circumstances would we consider going out to bid for a new modeling firm? And how often do we do that? You mentioned this for 20 plus years.
Well, we don't, we don't pay them on a regular basis. This is the first time we paid Dewberry in over five years. So I don't know why we would, you know, they've kept the model for us and have that technical ability to go back out for a whole remodeling effort. I don't, I don't even know why we would do that.
I don't, I don't either. I'm just asking, just to, just to get a feeling, because you know, when we talk about...
I mean, I guess if, if for some reason we weren't satisfied or we didn't have a satisfactory result with Dewberry, then we would go back out for, for that.
Okay.
But it would be a significant cost to the water users and the ratepayers because that's a technical service that's going to probably cost you $100,000.
Okay.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counsel Michael, regarding the 10 allowance, the question is, I think last time, I'm not sure if you really understood, when you say 10,000 allowed, they're coming back and say, well, I need that $10,000 because we forget to put something on the contract. Me, in experience, when I do a project or a building project, allowing if, let's say you are digging and you found a ledge, you need more money to remove that because they wasn't able to see that ledge underground. But the way I see, they're coming back, they want the allowance, just because they forget to review or added on the contract should be included on the contract from the beginning.
They, this is a different contractor. It's, the person doing the modeling is not the same person that is doing the design. They're two separate contractors. When we went out for the design, there was a line in the design that the Town of Southbridge has a model. It is maintained by Dewberry. We will include a $10,000 allowance to Dewberry to check the model for whatever the design parameters are. Dewberry was allowed to bid on our design portion. They were actually considered, very much considered. When it came down to it, we made a decision not to go to Dewberry. We made a decision to award the contract for the design to tie-in bond. Dewberry still needs to do the modeling work because tie-in bond is not going to redo our model for this one project. I agree. He didn't reestimate, he said, I'm taking the $10,000 that was in there, but I don't have any other parameters. I can't, it's a reasonable number, and that's all I can say.
No, I, I understand, and I respect where you come from, but as a council and to protect citizen tax money...
We need this. We can't do the project without it.
You know, we can't just telling him it's allow, you know, we have to give him a right answer because they're doing something and, and we need that extra money to be able to finish because we found something that needs to be done, or...
We knew that it was going to need to be done. We knew going into the project, we were going to need to model the options for the design. We couldn't ask him ahead of time to give him, give a number for that price. We don't, you know, what am I going to ask him? Give me a number and he tells me 20,000? There's no, there's no, I, he's not going to bid against anybody because he can't. He has a monopoly, kind of, on that model. He controls that model. So I made a, we made a determination, we do allowances all the time when we write contracts for things that are beyond our control, that we need to be able to, like ledge, like electrical stuff that we might, like the utility upgrade that we're taking that change order back from. This is one way that we put it so that we can do it up to that. Yes, he gave me a number of $10,000. He's probably a little upset he didn't get the contract for $300,000, but...
Can, can we do in the future, when you do a contract, say, allow the amount wherever it's allow, like a Pacific for what reason it will be allow, or you're going to leave it open, allow just...
No, no, we give it for what reasons that it can be allowed. There's a very, there was language, but this allowance was for this. It was for the doing of the model specifically.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seen none? Roll call?
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Thank you. Item...
Yeah, 8-0.
8-0?
Yeah.
Item 21, vote to ratify the interminable agreement for participation in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition FY 2025, buy-in between the Town of Spencer, acting buy-in through its Board of Selectment and the Town of Southbridge, acting buy-in through its Town Council pursuant to provisions of Section 4A of Chapter 40 of Mass General Law, with a match and share for each community set at the special rate of $1,000 for FY 2021 and $4,000 for FY 2022 through FY 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Ryan?
I had to leave before you talked about this, Heather, that night, so can you just give us an update of what, what this does and why we're doing it and why we're getting in this coalition with Spencer?
Sure. It's not just Spencer. This is 31 towns in Central Massachusetts that we are coalition of, for stormwater and MS4 permitting support. This has been going on since 2000, oh goodness, I don't have my phone up here. I believe it was 2012, originally started way back, and it was a smaller group then and has grown to a larger group. It gives us bargaining power to get stormwater grants, which is why we, we are a part of this, so that we can leverage our money to get technical assistance and technical training and technical, all sorts of different things. There's, if you go on the Central Mass Regional website, there is a, a litany of things. Basically, they satisfy all of our requirements for our public notifications and our public, you know, to get awareness campaigns just with their, with the programs that we've done so far. We couldn't do that for $4,000 a year. This year, so this has been going on for, since then, originally it was a different grant, and now they, they have different names. I, I wish I could explain easily how valuable this has been to me since coming to here in 2012. I've gone to at least a training a year put onto them, even more. Matt, my deputy director, sits in on their training all the time. I've gone to their, they used to hold almost monthly meetings, but now with COVID, they've been scaled back a little bit. It's a place that we can get together and brainstorm on stormwater ideas and how, ways to save money by going in a group. It's like bidding as a cooperative. We pool our resources together, and by that, we get a better product for the whole group. It also gave us bargaining power with the state. When the new permit came out, we were able to come together as a whole coalition and say that we have these issues, and they did that for us without me even having to worry about it. Not being part of this coalition, I would have to hire a consultant to assist us in our MS4 permitting every year. I, now they gave us trainings on how to fill out the forms to be able to submit to the state, so we don't have to hire someone. I, I, I know it, it's, one of these things, I know that Counselor Steves asked me why he'd never seen this before, and I can't under, I can't tell you why, but I can tell you that multiple of these agreements have been signed in the past. This year, they did reduce it to $1,000 because of COVID, and they knew people were probably stretched for money.